Good evening. My name is Jerry Cochran and I'd like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for being here. Just as a reminder, if you are going to, if you would like to speak tonight, please sign in on the sheet at the back. Otherwise, that'll help the clerk log and catalog the record. So to begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Rosa Torres.
Present.
Mitchell Moffett.
Present.
Paul Mendez, excused. Kim Lerman, excused. April Campos, excused. Dana Crutchfield.
Present.
Rachel Teal, excused. Jay Handler.
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there are five members present. We do have a quorum.
Excellent. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteer citizens appointed by the city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block ground allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on the community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience that all the proceedings tonight are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Spectrum Cable PSC 191, and will be rebroadcast several times in the next month. This meeting is also being recorded, so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table, so you follow along with the meeting. And at this time, please silence your cellphones and other devices to prevent interruptions during our meeting. And I'll take a pause here to note that Commissioner Lerman is present, so we have six members present. Thank you. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience that the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission, that Washington state law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening not only to be fair, but it appear to be fair. In addition, Washington state law prohibits the Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which a member may have a direct interest, or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda. Agenda needs to be aired at this time or it will be waived. First, to start with, are there any Planning Commission members who would like to make a declaration at this time regarding any of the agenda items? Let the record show, there were no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience that would, this evening, who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on this agenda? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Commissioner Lerman previously recused herself from CPA 2024-001, that would, for who would hurt from participating further.
Excellent. We'll note that in the record.
Sure. This is Commissioner Lerman. At the time, I was running for commission and someone in the audience had put in, had donated to my fund. I did not know the person until we were at the meeting, and I did not win the election, and so therefore, I still don't know the person either. Okay.
Thank you. We as a Planning Commission need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendation to city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is not only your opportunity to get the facts and opinions placed into the official record the city council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage. The next item on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes. We actually have two meeting minutes. This meeting to approve, one was from April 18th, 2024, and another one for the special meeting on April 30th, 2024. So we'll start with the April 18th meeting minutes. These meeting minutes were mailed or provided to commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had the opportunity to take a look at them. I would entertain discussion or questions or a motion to approve the meeting minutes for April 18th.
This is Commissioner Lerman. I approve the meeting minutes as printed on April 18th.
Been moved by Commissioner Lerman. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Did all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, let's the record show that the meeting minutes for April 18th, 2024 were passed unanimously. Second set of meeting minutes was for our special meeting on April 30th. Again, these were provided ahead of time. I trust this was a single, single item agenda. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at these meeting minutes, and if there are questions or comments, or I would entertain a motion to approve these meeting minutes.
Commissioner Moffett, I've moved that we approve these minutes as written.
Commissioner Lerman, second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Moffett and seconded by Commissioner Lerman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes for April 30th, 2024 were unanimously approved as well. All right, we have no old business, so we will move on the agenda right into the public hearings. We have two public hearing items on, and I know that one is extremely more popular, so I'd like to actually change the order. Exercise chair's prolegion, change the order to do the overnight truck habitation first to not hold them hostage to the second item on the agenda, which we have a lot to talk about. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to staff to cover item CA. Oh, you just, you just moved it. I couldn't, I can't see the number. The truck, overnight truck parking agenda item. Thank you, staff.
Hi, I'm Jen Ballard. I'm senior planner with Pasco. And so it's CA 2024-001 is overnight truck habitation. And a quick recap, for those who haven't been following this journey of the code amendments since it was first brought before the Planning Commission in January 2024. Staff was approached by the applicant interested in putting what we're terming overnight truck habitation on their property, Zoned C3, within the city of Pasco as the property's primary use. So unlike a typical freeway truck stop that has like a fueling station as a primary use, the overnight truck parking habitation would be the primary use, and the accessory use would be things like laundry, or shower, or clubhouse space. So it was determined that this use is not currently defined in the Pasco municipal code and would require a code amendment to allow as a primary use outside of Zones I2 and I3. So the applicant made application to the Planning Commission to develop a code text amendment for the proposed use. April 18th was the Planning Commission workshop, and tonight is the first open record hearing for this code text amendment, so that interested parties may give testimony. And the Planning Commission can then provide specific direction to staff regarding the content of the amendment, so then staff can craft code language and bring it back to the Planning Commission, hopefully this July. Now, just a quick recap of the need for designated truck parking. So though this amendment was spurred on by interest in one particular property, we feel that truck parking should be looked at in more than just, just the C3 zone, and really examined where regulations and specific requirements be put in place for this use. Because designated truck parking, where the truck operator can park their vehicles, is an identified need in the Washington Truck Parking Assessment that was published in 2022. There's a link in your staff reports to that 2022 document. There were actually two specific areas in the tri-cities, and they were both in Pasco. I don't know. There you go. All right, there. One is off 395, and the other is south, more near port property, that were identified as locations where clusters of trucks were parked in undesigned areas. And undesigned areas are generally those areas like on the, the shoulders of roads, or on abandoned properties, or unimproved properties, or on and off ramps on the freeways. And those clusters are in areas that are zoned commercial and industrial generally. Okay, and currently overnight truck habitation is permitted in the I2 and I3 districts because all uses not otherwise prohibited by law are permitted uses within those districts. So they're permitted outright. The next group of slides, I'm going to try to address the information request that the Planning Commission made of staff during the April workshop, which was examples of similar uses in Pasco, and in greater Washington, and elsewhere, examples of code from those jurisdictions regarding overnight truck habitation as a primary use, truck routes within Pasco, and special permits, conditions, approval revocations, buffers of various widths from quote-unquote incompatible uses. We were also asked about minimum lot size, so a minimum lot size map was requested from the Planning Commission, but we did not make one. Our staff did not feel that requiring a minimum lot size for this use was appropriate, and that was explained in the staff report. So these are two similar facilities in Pasco, and we couldn't find, staff couldn't find any permitted uses or existing uses where overnight truck habitation is the primary use. So all of these similar facilities I'm going to go through are all, the truck parking is the accessory use. But this is what we've got. We've got Love's Travel Stop and King City Truck Stop right off of 395, and those properties are both zoned to C3, general commercial. And Love's Travel Stop is the most recent of those two constructions. The gas station is a permitted primary use in C3, and the 57 truck parking spaces are an accessory use. Okay, these three examples are all in properties zoned I1. So it's MDM Trucking, DLM Transport, and Martinez Trucking, and they're all freight providers that also provide some sort of truck parking on their properties. All right, I just want to preface my in-state similar examples in the fact that I could not find any code, and nor could the Municipal Research and Services Center for overnight truck habitation in these other jurisdictions that was allowed as primary uses. Pretty much all of the code we found were restrictions or prohibitions, like anti-idling rules, or regulations prohibiting trucks from parking on street shoulders, or in residential areas, or going through particular areas. So we don't have any examples, specific examples of the code we're trying to craft that we've been able to take from other Washington municipalities. And I also overcrowded these slides, so sorry, but this is Exhibit 3 in your staff report, if you want to have a clearer view. Okay, so this first example is from Ellensburg. The property is highlighted in the corner in red, and then you can see a street view in the upper corner. I was not able to verify that this was an approved use, or an approved project with local staff. I did leave them a message. So the capacity is 40 spaces. It also contains a truck wash and a tire sales business, which was in existence prior to the truck parking. You can, there's no fence, there's no gate, there's no lighting, there's no onsite really amenities, other than a truck wash vacuum and a customer bathroom. And, but there are many amenities within walking distance. There's a Love's Truck Stop that has showers, there's hotels, motels, truck repair facilities. So, and it's right off the highway. And this is kind of a self-serve situation, because you pay and reserve your space online through an app on your phone. This example is in Airway Heights. So the, there are 25 spaces that are dedicated for overnight truck parking. The rest is dedicated for a freight use, but the property was developed for the freight use and the overnight parking at the same time. There is a fence, it's chain-linked with barbed wire, but the gates are not automatic, they don't close, it's gravelled, there's no landscaping, there's no onsite amenities, and there are none within walking distance. So the plus about this location is that it's deep in the heart of an industrial area, so it's where freight would be dropped off or picked up. And then they, the people supposedly could Uber to, to Walmart or other places. This example is from Maple Valley. Again, I could not verify this with local municipal staff. This piece of property was developed for truck parking, as well as RV and truck storage. There is a gate, there is a fence, there is no landscaping, but it's buffered by natural forest. And you can actually see that within 300 feet to the south, it's actually residential neighborhood. So it backs up against a residential neighborhood, and that residential neighborhood is also right next to an Amazon distribution center. There are 20 spaces that are designated for overnight truck parking. There is an office onsite, but that's the only onsite amenity. But within walking distance, there's restaurants, post office, animal hospital, auto parts store, so. All right. This next example is by a company called Big Rig Parking. They operate out of Tennessee. So these are more of, I don't want to say like professional, purposeful overnight truck parking. They are paved, the truck parking is a primary use, the lots are all electronically accessed via a gate. There's no staff onsite, but there is a 24/7 call center. I called it myself. The only amenities onsite are trash receptacles, but they're all right next to a Love's. So the idea is where a lot of your traditional freeway truck stops, either they don't have enough spaces, or the spaces are first come, first served. So this gives people a guaranteed safe way to reserve a space, but still be able to take advantage of all those amenities provided by somebody else. And in your staff reports, the electronic copies, there's links to drone footage of these two different sites. Again, there's no code examples for you. They're both in counties, not municipalities. And for example, of one of the counties, all the land in the counties are zoned the same zone, and they only have three outright permitted uses, which is single-family dwelling, agriculture, and church, and everything else is a conditional use. So we have, we've kind of struck out with examples of code. And obviously, these are not exhaustive samples, they're just a small sampling of what I could find, and what enough, sorry, what examples had enough information or ability to verify it. The Planning Commission had also asked about local truck routes. Unfortunately, we don't have a map, we don't have any of the GIS information. We have a list in our code that you can see, there's a list of 10 partial roads, like a part of Lewis Street, a part of Ainsworth, Maitland, Oregon, and also all streets, roads, and highways in areas zoned I1 and I2 are also considered truck routes through the city of Pasco. And there was also concern about outright use versus special use permits. And in Chapter 25 dot 200, you can read about the required public hearing, how a permit that was issued can be revoked if conditions are not met. Even after the, the business is in place, it can always be revoked in accordance with the code. And to be permitted in the first place, there's these six findings of fact that the hearing examiner would have to make on whether or not the, the proposal meets those, that intent. He had also asked about buffering from particular uses. This map is for buffering residential zoning districts, so we have three different buffers shown. This is Exhibit A in your staff report, if you want to see a better, more detailed copy. And you can see the three different buffers, which are 500, 1,000, and 1,500, how they encroach into the various commercial and industrial zones on the map. And the next map is Future Land Residential Designations Buffering. So that's something that the Planning Commission can consider when they're giving us staff guidance about how you want to have this code written. Like, do you want to go off of the zoning map? Do you want to look at buffers off of the Future Land Use map? Do you want to buffer existing non-conforming residential land uses? Like, there's residential land uses in lands that are zoned industrial, that sort of thing. All right, so this is a chart of the preliminary standards guidance requested by staff. So it's a list of various items that were discussed in prior meetings. They weren't exactly fleshed out, like, things like, should it be in allowed, should this overnight truck habitation be in allowed use? And in what zone should it be a permitted, sorry, permitted via special permit? Should it be disallowed completely? Different maximum stays, access routes, like, you can't go through any residential neighborhoods, period, or you can only go on truck routes or state routes, if there's any kind of lighting requirements. So on this one, staff doesn't have too much guidance to give, partially because I'm brand new here, and a brand new to Pasco. So I don't know the, the feel of the area yet. I would say yes to trash receptacles, because historically trash and other waste products have been left behind, and it's been a problem in places where, like, free truck parking was allowed. Like, there were places in Florida where waste stations were allowing overnight truck parking, but they weren't providing bathrooms or trash receptacles, and they ended up stopping the program because too much waste was accumulating. There are plenty of examples where fencing wasn't necessary exactly. It's, and a lot of different requirements or amenity requirements beyond that really would just affect the price of what the truckers would be charged. There have been multiple state and federal kind of trucking coalition or research done about how to get truckers to use particular spots, if they're willing to pay for them, all sorts of information gathered. They found about 50%, a little less, of truckers are willing to pay for spaces. Others say they aren't willing to pay, or they're not willing to pay some of the higher prices because they just can't make ends meet. So, you know, just like with anything, the, the nicer the place, the more amenities, the higher the price tag. And it might not be necessary. Like, you don't necessarily have to light up a, a truck parking habitation area like an airport to be safe, you know? You don't have to have an automatic gate. It's all about what the, the customer and the owner perhaps feel comfortable with. Maybe it's not something that we have to require, but that's, staff eagerly awaits your guidance. And even though in the staff report, we did say that we'd hope to return in June with a sample for a written code, we'd like to push that to July, just for staffing issues.
Great, thank you for that. Can you just leave this slide up? Because I think if the commissioners can go ahead and give you feedback and comments based on this criteria, that'll help give you thoughts for how you want to craft the, the draft code. And by the way, thanks for, I know we've made a lot of requests for maps and stuff. I know you couldn't do it all, but thanks for what you did to help us understand this, because it's sometimes, having the visuals in front of us is sometimes helpful. So appreciate the work you put into that, and I realize it's sometimes hard. So with that, I'll open it up to the commissioners for questions, or comments, or guidance that they would have for staff as they craft this code. And then after that, we'll go ahead and open it up, because this is a public hearing item, and see if there's anyone here to speak on this item. But before that, open it up to commissioners. Go ahead, Commissioner Moffett.
Commissioner Moffett here. So first of all, I'm going to start with what you ended with. To me, price is not our primary concern. I really don't care what it costs, the trucker to park there. Our primary concern should be the safe, comfortable place for Pasco citizens to live. Promoting safe, successful businesses, also one of our concerns. But the cost, I, I really don't think that's, that's something we should worry about. I get what you're saying. I disagree. I think that the, it should be lit up like an airport to keep crime down, to keep, keep, I mean, let's face the reality. I went to Pasco Walmart about a month ago, and there was a girl working the lot, and I don't mean she was sweeping. And so we don't need that anywhere in Pasco. It's here, we can't get rid of it. But we don't need to make places that are safe havens for that either, and an unlit truck stop is notorious for that. So I disagree with that part. Special use permit, I think, is absolutely 100% the way we need to go. The, the code is crafted by staff, so we can have higher standards. We don't have to match what they're doing in Florida. We don't have to match what they're doing in Cleelam or anywhere else. We can have higher standards. And the person who presented this actually had higher standards. I liked their standards that they had. Green spaces, lighting, and I realize you weren't here for that, but green spaces, a lot lighting, great amenities. What they presented, I liked. And it was way above standards of what you just presented, and we need to stick closer to the higher standards. And if it costs the trucker more to stay there, that's not on us. Our job is to keep the citizens safe and comfortable where they live and work.
Thank you, Commissioner Moffett. Yeah, and if we go by other folks' standards, it appears that nobody has any, so I think we, I think we're unique in that we actually will have some standards. Other commissioners, Commissioner Crutchfield.
Yes, Commissioner Crutchfield here. I concur with much of what Commissioner Moffett said. Planning Commission discussed this in February. Key topics that were of very much importance were to mitigating visual and noise impact, safety, security, traffic management, community compatibility. I know that a lot of these semis have to run 24/7 if they have a refrigeration. That is a lot of noise. That is not mitigated by some Arber Vita. I'm also concerned about the fact that a minimum size would not be required for these. These are big trucks that have to have space to maneuver. I think it belongs in the industrial area. That way, you're not spending a lot of money on traffic analysis studies. You're not trying to figure out what is a traffic calming measure. If you have one of those to suggest, we need to put. If you have one of those to suggest, we need to put it on Road sixty-eight right now. And if we put more trucks going on those corridors, we're going to be in a really bad shape. These maps are are interesting because apart from Airway Heights, it looks like they're somewhat in close proximity to the freeway. These people are passing through on the freeway. The industrial zones such as Lewis Street, Oregon Avenue, Ainsworth are in close proximity, and they can be easily accessed by trucks. Somewhere in staff's information, there was something in reference to limiting small areas off Road sixty-eight and Road one hundred. Why would we even think about putting this kind of facility in that area? We're already overburdened with traffic, major safety issues. I think all of these considerations make an overnight facility simply incompatible with residential uses. They should be located accordingly to protect the residential zones. They should be located in the industrial area. Thank you.
Can you can you remind us, staff, today they are in I-1 and I-2 only already? Or they're not at all in anywhere?
They're allowed as primary uses in I-2 and I-3. But there are existing residential uses next to I-1 and within other industrial zones because they were there prior to the industry. So just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
Commissioner Torres here. Concur with the previous comments already by the other commissioners. I would just like to say, I think the nonexistent or the trouble findings, other existing codes in Washington and other places, I think, gives us an opportunity to craft our own code. And so with that, I I think some of the things that you've, that the staff has pointed out already as being some of the things that we could require and kind of set the standard, I think, are good places to start. There was something, I think, in the in the report you guys put together, kind of comparing to RV, existing RV standards, I think, for RV parking. I think we could take some of the best practices from that and maybe combine it with some of the other things that you already have listed in that little chart. And so, I mean, I definitely, some of the things I think that are minimum that we should have is the maximum stay, the buffering with the residential zones. I think that could be something that we can discuss as far as exactly what that buffer looks like. But definitely, I think, you know, I mean, in concert with Commissioner Crutchfield, that we definitely need to buffer our residential areas. And then I think the parking surface and the amenities required are gonna be the other two things that are gonna be high on the list for us to to spell out as far as what the standard should be for this code. Yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Ms. Commissioner Lerman, I agree with my fellow commissioners here. One of the topics we talked about in the last two times that we had met and discussed about this discussion was watching out for our intercity residents, our schools, our parks, as well as our roads, making sure that our community members are able to travel throughout the city safely and not overburden those areas. So with that in mind, C-three locations, I feel like should be taken off of the table. So I move to strike C-three from a zoning option classification for this topic. Is that what we're looking at?
We don't need a motion tonight because they're gonna come back with code. But I think that's a recommendation you want to see in the code, which is.
That's a recommendation. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Excellent. Go ahead, Commissioner Handler.
As as an architect and planner over my years, I have worked on truck stops many, many times in the planning of truck stops. And I'm probably saying something that everybody knows. They are complicated, and they impose heavy, heavy issues on the site that they're located on and all those surrounding sites. The turning radiuses for for access and egress, getting trucks to conveniently conveniently parked in these things and then conveniently leaving. It's gonna take, it takes a lot of deep thinking about how these things want to operate relative to the surrounding areas in the community. I, for one, yeah, I think we talked about this the last time, they don't belong anywhere near a C-three. And from my perspective, I would, and maybe I'm not sure I'm saying this right, I would relegate them to industrial zoning only, assuming they can provide adequate access, egress, and the facilities needed. And I don't, and let me just end by saying, I think it's a great, I think we need these, but they need to be really carefully thought out. Otherwise, they'll end up being a disaster and provide very, very bad experiences for for the truckers and the community, so. That's, yeah.
Thank you very much. One last comment for me, that I wrote down some notes, and then we'll, but for recommendations, then we'll open it up to public hearing for anybody that wants to speak on this item. I think it sounds like we've got some good consensus that there's a lot of concerns about C-three. Now, I do know we have talked about this. C-three can be mitigated with special permitting, and making the requirements is really hard. But I think the consensus from the commissioners is we just want to avoid C-three altogether. And so that sounds like that's a pretty strong, almost unanimous guidance. In terms of some of the other ones, I think that I'll ask the commissioners, if you have other ideas on specifics on this chart, like, you know, what do you think is a reasonable maximum stay? Is it twenty-four, forty? Send them an email to staff over the next month or so, and they will kind of incorporate those. For me, I generally like the idea of somewhere between twenty-four and forty-eight hours max. I like that they have to be adjacent to truck routes and freeways. I like that they have to be gated and fenced with lots of landscaping and amenities like we saw in the presentation, that they were very nice. I like that we control light pollution and noise pollution because, yes, they need to be well lit, but think about, I live across from the, across the river from the Ben Franklin Transit Bus Garage, and I have the worst light pollution in the area, can't even use my telescope. So there's downsides to lighting these things, too, as they create light pollution and noise, the noise pollution. I think there's also feedback around distance. There's two elements here is residential zone setbacks. That should probably be considered a significant difference. But if it's already existing residential use, that should be even farther, right? So if there's houses there, it should be maybe two thousand feet. If there's not housing there and it's just residential, maybe it should be less. But setback from residential is significant regardless of wet zone, it's in, right? I think whether it's industrial, one, two, or three. We like the landscaping. I was gonna, the last question I had was, what do you mean by striping? Does that mean it has to have parking lot stripes, or?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's probably a good thing so that trucks. And I think Commissioner Handler's feedback around turning radiuses and traffic congestion caused by these things turning backed up. If you, I think we talked about it, I go by North Bend every once in a while. Have you ever seen the truck stop in North Bend? They're backed up all the way to the pass sometimes because of that truck stop is so congested. And it's a mess, right? And so I think we just need to be considerate of those things like the turning races. So I think staff has lots of ideas already, and we've given you some feedback. I would encourage the commissioners, if you have other specifics you think of on these table items throughout the month, go ahead and send staff an email, and that can give them more specifics to include in their draft code. And then, it sounds like in July, you'll come back with a draft code?
Yes.
And then in July, we can talk about it some more. Will that also be a public hearing at that time?
Yes.
Okay. And so there'll either be a public hearing or the continuance or a motion to approve or deny. So, cool? Yeah, go ahead.
One other, one other concern I wanna, I wanna air is, you know, how big are these things gonna be? You know, a twenty, a twenty truck stop, a twenty, a twenty number truck stop is one thing. A hundred and twenty number truck stop is an entirely different animal. And there ought to be a lot of thought, and I'm sure that the proprietor of the truck stop, you know, more is better for obvious reasons. It makes it more feasible to put these facilities in. But you get a hundred and twenty trucks moving around versus twenty trucks. It's a big issue. So it's something we should consider, like, how big do these things want to be? Is there a maximum? Is there a minimum? And and all the issues associated with the sizes, anyway.
Also, I wanted to add one thing, Commissioner Crutchfield. That these trucks are probably coming and going at all different hours. It doesn't just stop at seven PM and open at seven AM. So you've got that constant twenty-four hour even more important to keep that in an area where it has like use instead of, you know, a thousand feet away from, you know, a district that you may be imposing upon, you know, people living or schools. A thousand feet is only three blocks. That's not very far, so, thank you.
Great. Any more comments from commissioners? If not, I will open it up public hearing. Okay. Well, I'd like to open the public hearing on this item. If you would like to speak on this item, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and city of address for the records, and please keep your comments brief to somewhere in the target range of three minutes. So is there anywhere, anyone to speak on this item? Go ahead, sir. Welcome. And go ahead and turn the, push the button there on the.
Hi there, my name is John Schline. I'm with B4 Development and Consulting, Pasco, Washington. We're the applicant for this particular situation. I gotta say, I believe I agree with about ninety-nine percent of everything that was said up here. So thank you very much. We were told back in fall of last year that there has never been a code amendment brought by a resident of Pasco that has actually gone through the entire process. So we consider it awesome that we're getting this far, and so thank you very much for that. Just today, I was doing a little bit of research, and in January of 2024, Washington State got a hundred and twenty-five million dollar grant to deal with this very issue on I-five between Canada and Oregon. And they're creating an entire system to deal with this very issue because it's become such a problem. So that's why we have gotten together with the CEO of Swift Trucking and also the owner of Big Rig Parking, and they want to create an entire system privately throughout the United States, and they've identified Pasco here as one of the great options to start in Washington. I think this is a great opportunity for Pasco to become a leader in Washington, to create a code that would benefit those in Washington. When other municipalities come and say, hey, we want to do a truck parking, we need some guidance, this is a great opportunity for Pasco to become a leader in that. Commissioner Lerman, I appreciated what you said last time, that you referred to it, and ever since then, I've referred to it this way, too, is you refer to it as a truck hotel. You know, that's how we view this. But a lot of the stuff you saw on the on the screen were like Super Eights. And, you know, we're not wanting to build a Super Eight, we're wanting to build a Marriott. And so that's a big issue for us. And that's why when we presented it, we presented it that we're wanting to create a clubhouse, where showers and restrooms and a gym, and potentially even in their long-term strategy, things like a clinic where people can see a doctor while they're there, do their laundry, all that kind of stuff. It'll be staffed twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It's gonna be well lit. It's gonna be a great opportunity. Where I want to be very clear is I agree that this shouldn't just go into any location. All right? So I agree with you, Road sixty-eight, Road one hundred, this is a terrible place for this. But one thing I want to point out is we've made this big deal about how we want it to be just in C-three. Well, we have a very specific property we would like to put this in. And so I want to put that into perspective for you for just a second because I heard Commissioner Crutchfield say that Lewis Street would be a good place for this. Well, Lewis Street is mostly C-three with a little bit of I. We happen to want to put it on Lewis Street, right next to the Pasco Flea Market. Lewis Street happens to also be a truck route. And so their eventual goal is to take Forty East all the way up to Lewis Street and then redo the intersection of Heritage Boulevard and Lewis Street. So that will become the main truck route to get into Amazon or any of those areas down there. There's a truck school already down there. We actually own the twelve acres to the north as well against the interstate, and we believe that this would be a part of that for the long-term strategy. So we believe this is a great location. What we, our desire was, from the get-go, is we asked for a conditional use permit. That's what we asked for. I don't know that this needs to be written down in code and the long-term strategy to have this all spelled out. We just asked for a conditional use permit. I believe the location that we have is a great location for it because it is on the main truck route that will be done for Amazon, visible from I-one eighty-two. Just a great location. But I fully agree, shouldn't just go to anywhere here in the Tri-Cities, anywhere in Pasco. It needs to go where trucks go. And we also have six acres. I agree with you that I think it needs to have at least five. We happen to have six. What our argument was early on was our primary use is truck parking. Our secondary use is habitation. So our goal was to get the RV parking status issued for a truck parking because our primary goal, or our primary use is truck parking. The secondary use is overnight. And that's where the wording got a little interesting with Love's Truck Stop, for instance. They can do overnight habitation because their primary use is a truck stop. Their secondary use is overnight parking. So that's pretty much it. Thank you for listening, and we're excited to hopefully get this going someday.
Thank you for being here. Do you have a question for us?
So in your in-depth studies of what you're trying to do, I would imagine that you have a minimum size truck stop and 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 what that might entail in the way of facilities and size and stuff like that. And you also might have one that you would consider your your ideal size. I mean, there's, 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 there's economics at play here. I mean, you know, five trucks isn't gonna be able to pay for, you know, I mean, you're gonna need a certain amount, a certain, you know, a certain mass of trucks to justify what it is you're gonna be building. And I'd just be curious, as this thing goes on, more and more, to know, to know what that would be. It would help us to know more about your goals and what you want to have happen.
And what we've been asked to do is search for land five acres and above. And so we're looking for land anywhere from here to Seattle. That's kind of our goal right now, is to get three or four between here and Seattle of the same ideal thing, same idea, and minimum of five acres. And we've identified a couple.
How many, how many trucks does five acres park?
You can park about a hundred and twenty-five, I believe.
So, interesting. So that's, you know, so it'll be interesting to see how a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five trucks access egress to five acres, and how that all works.
Yep, for sure. No need to. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Can you tell me where his property is that they're talking about?
Staff, I think Commissioner Moffett had a question. Do you want to know where the, where their current Lewis Street proposed property is? I assume it's, maybe you can go back up to the map, and I don't know if you could point it out with the pointer.
Can you show on this residential district buffering zone? He doesn't have the streets marked down in here?
Didn't he say it was by the farmer's or the market?
Yeah, by the flea market.
Flea market? Oh, the flea market.
Flea markets ways. See, I don't have the streets.
All right. All right. Any other, any of you else would like to speak on this item tonight in the public hearing? Make a second call. Yeah, what, go ahead, staff, if you want to point it out, where the, the applicant's proposed. Yeah, you're right. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. It's gotta be over where, gotta be over where Amazon is somewhere there.
Yeah, it's on, it's on Lewis. Do you have the exact address?
There is no address.
Oh, sorry. It's a field.
Commissioner Lerman, I have a question for city staff. So the gentleman used the term conditional use permit, and then we have the term special permit. So if you guys can clarify what's the difference, or is those terms used interchangeably? Appreciate that.
They can be used interchangeably. They, they mean the same item.
All right. I'll make a third call and final call. Anyone else want to speak on this public hearing item from the audience? Okay. We're gonna close the public hearing on this item. Thank you for being here, applicant and also staff. I hope you got a earful of feedback, and we'll look forward to the draft language or graph code next month.
Appreciate your input.
All right. Now we'll go back to the beginning. And we'll tackle the next item on the agenda, which is CPA 2023-001. This is the Future Land Use Map Amendment from Low Density to Mixed Residential Commercial. And so I'll turn it over to staff to kick off. Just so you know, this, we'll start off with staff's presentation. Then we'll go to the commissioners asking questions and clarifications from staff, and then we'll open it up for public hearing. So go ahead, staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Jeff Adams, Associate Planner for the city. As you mentioned, this is CPA 2023-001. CPA stands for Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And the objective is to reclassify this land use designation from low-density residential to mixed residential commercial for a property located on Road 100 and Argent Road. At the last meeting, one of the staff asked for us to clarify using a flowchart how the process goes from land use to zoning to projects. And so in this case, we have a low-density residential land use. The blue squares are land use. And then with the comprehensive, and then you can see that there's an arrow from the low-density residential straight across to the possible rezones that go in the low-density residential land use area, which are RS-12, RS-12, RS-1 and R-1. So as you can see, the, the overall land use designations are kind of a thirty-thousand-foot goal for what the look and feel of a neighborhood wants to be. For example, in the low-density, you want to have single-family dwelling units and maybe a few duplexes and some accessory dwelling units, but mostly just large lot, low-density residential. The red rectangle would be the process that we're going through right now, considering a change in the overall designation to mixed residential and commercial. And what that would do is it would lay the groundwork. Again, this, this is a goal. It's not a, a code. The, the overall land use designation would allow for a rezone. In this case, it would be R-1, 2, 3, and 4, which are low-density, medium-density, and a high-density residential, office, C-1, and mixed use. And so those are the possible zones that one could apply to the mixed residential and commercial land use. And then from the green squares, those are the actual zones. And the zones give you, they actually connect the city code to the projects that you can put on the, on the property. So it would be through the zones that you'd know what kind of buildings you can put, what kind of uses you can put, setbacks, building heights, all of that stuff. None of that is spelled out in the land use designations. So you have to go from the land use designations to the zones before you can ever get to the project level. And so, and this is, we need to reiterate that what we're doing tonight is a land use amendment or a proposal for a land use amendment. And so it will not specify building heights and setbacks and any of that stuff, but it will lay the groundwork for what kinds of zones are available for that area. And so that's, I hope that's clear. Any questions about that? Okay. Okay, thank you. Again, the property is located on the southeast corner of Road 100 and West Argent Road. Road 100 and West Argent are designated for arterial use. And we had a question that came to us, and that we need to clarify this. The current designations of these roads is, let me just bring up the map for you. So this is the existing street functional classification system. As you can see, Argent Road is purple. And if you go down to the street classification table there, it says that Argent is a collector's street. Also, you can see that Road 100 is, is green, and that is a minor arterial. And so that's the existing street functional classification system. The staff report refers to these both as arterial streets. That is not exactly accurate. They are slated for arterial. This is the future street func- functional classification system. As you can see, again, we have a green line for the Argent Road. And as you go down to the table, it's minor arterial. And then Road 100 would be other principal arterial. And so that is the future designation. And because we're dealing with, everything we're dealing with here is future, we take this into consideration when we consider land use amendments. So this slide back to the, there's one more slide here that might be helpful, and that is the existing number of lanes on the street. Right now, Road 100 is a four-lane road down to, I don't actually know what that street is there. Probably Maple Lane. And then from Maple or so south would be a two-lane road. And Argent Road also is a two-lane road from about Road 84 to Road 100. And so, again, this is for future development. Those would have to be augmented in order to accommodate arterial traffic flows. And then we're gonna go back to, and this is our close-up aerial view, the vicinity map. You can see that there are two major structures on each of these two parcels. There's a parcel line right here. There's a single-family dwelling unit there. There's a single-family dwelling unit here. And I believe that's a garage right there. Then you've got a church across the street. You've got single-family dwellings surrounding. And then over here, you've got a vacant lot. And then you've got a, I think it's a vineyard. You go to the land use map, and you can see that, again, you've got a public assembly use across the street to the north, and then surrounding single-family dwelling units, undeveloped land to the north, northeast, and then the ag land to the further east. This is the current zoning. The site is zone RS-20, which is low-density residential, twenty-thousand-square-foot lot, minimum size. And surrounded to the east and to the south is the same zoning. Across the street to the north and to the west, you have RS-12 zoning, which is twenty, or twelve-thousand-square-foot lot minimums. And then this is a map that shows the, in the green, you show the, the current sidewalk inventory. And you've got some good sidewalks to the west here, along Argent, and then some of these streets to the north. And you have sidewalk going on the east side of Road 100 for a good length, adjacent this new development here, and then further up north. And then these colored lines here are, this is a quarter-mile buffer from the property. And then this orange one is a half-mile buffer. So you can get an idea of the distances from the property that we have sidewalk available. As discussed last time in your meeting, and I was not here, I apologize. I was not part of the project until recently. But the approval criteria that we use to evaluate these proposals is spelled out in Pasco municipal code 25.215.020 subsection 8C. And we'll just read them together. "The proposed amendment bears a substantial relationship to the public health, safety, welfare, and protection of the environment. The proposed amendment is consistent with the requirements of Chapter 36.70A RCW." And that's the state code for those of you who are not familiar with the RCWs. "And with the portion of the city's adopted comprehensive plan not affected by the amendment." "Three, the proposed amendment corrects an obvious mapping error, or the proposed amendment addresses an identified deficiency in the comprehensive plan." Now, you notice that after three, there's an "or", and that means that we're supposed to use these criteria as touchstones and not hard-fast regulations. It's not the same as a zoning code where you have to follow every item on the list. So it's more like general guidelines. And then further down Pasco municipal code 25.215.020 subsection 9, there are a handful of other things that also need to be taken into consideration. "The effect upon the physical environment, the effect on open space and natural features, including but not limited to topography, streams, rivers, and lakes, the compatibility with and impact on adjacent land uses and surrounding neighborhoods, the adequacy of and impact on community facilities, including utilities, roads, public transportation, parks, recreation, and schools, the quality and location of land planned for the proposed land use type and density, and the demand for such land, the current and projected project density in the area, and the effect, if any, upon other aspects of the comprehensive plan." And all of these are in the staff report. They've been evaluated, I think, by staff. I don't remember what I was gonna say. Anyway, I think that what we need to do is go through each of these one at a time and just kind of get a feel for where the commission is on each of these. And, and also, we need to note that some of these things simply don't apply. This is not next to the river, so we don't have to worry about, you know, direct impacts on the river. Probably not a lot of natural features and that kind of stuff. And so not all of these criteria apply to this proposal.
I know we, you provided these in the staff reports, and hopefully the commissioners have read them. But can you go through each one of these and then pause? And if the commissioners have questions on the specific item, that way you don't go through all of them, and we have to keep going back and forth. We'll just do one at a time, and if the commissioners have feedback or questions, we can do that one, and then move on to the next one. We'll get through these, and then we'll open it up for public hearing. Does that sound reasonable for everybody?
Absolutely.
All right. Well, let's start with number one.
Okay. So the first one, "Does the proposed amendment bear a substantial relationship to the public health, safety, welfare, and protection of the environment?" And we've, I basically just put the verbiage from the staff report here. I'm not gonna read it to you, but this is one that staff, staff's measured opinion is that it probably wouldn't have a big effect on the environment.
Thanks. Can you define for us? The, the word I got stuck on is, I don't know what the definition of substantial relationship means in this context. It's kind of hard to, because you could say, is it a substantial positive relationship or negative relationship? So how do you interpret that when you make your recommendation? I don't know what that really means in this context.
That's a good question, and I don't have a good answer for it. I, I would say that substantial would mean something that is measurable. If there's a measure.
Like impactful would be a better word?
Yeah. If you could measure the impacts of it, then it would have to be taken into consideration. Otherwise, it would be considered minimal.
Great. Well, commissioners, do you have questions or feedback on this particular item? Go ahead, Commissioner Moffett.
So the last bullet there, "The proposed amendment does not interfere with or increase risk of disturbance to the public health and safety." I understand that to mean the proposed amendment being that you're, it's not, there's not a proposed any type of a business, but that is out there in Wonderland. So theoretically, yes, the proposed amendment does not, but the future use of that land could negate that bullet.
Correct. And it really depends on the kind of zoning. And so there, I guess there's not enough information to make a determination on that.
I think the other thing is you go back to his flowchart. This opens it up to four residential categories of different density. It opens up to office as well as mixed use, as well as C-1. So what you are opening the doors is to any of those zone uses, which one of them or more of them could have, but we don't know because we're not that far, and we don't have a proposal either. Other feedback or question?
Oh.
Yes, this was actually gonna be something I was gonna say later, but it kind of goes with this. I came from the packet. It was a staff statement. And this is a big bullet to me, and it was staff's input. It's, and they said, "Due to the breadth of the allowable zones in the MU designation, it is impossible to predict with any degree of accuracy the compatibility and impact of the proposed amendment or adjacent land uses and surrounding neighborhoods. It is a non-project application." And this concerns me big time. Because, yes, we're doing one thing, but it pushes it one step closer to a zoning change. The maps were, this was good because this visual shows that clearly it's an isolated, and it's, I hate to use the word, it's being plopped, but that's what it looks like in the midst of longstanding residential development. So I have more to say on that, but I, I wanted to just add that part now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Crutchfield. Go ahead, next, Commissioner Torres.
Yeah. I think I was gonna make a similar point to Commissioner Crutchfield. I think I just want to get clarity on that flowchart that we kind of started with in the beginning because I think when we make a statement saying that, yeah, of course, this, the thing we're looking at right now with the little, basically, I feel like we're, we're considering the little red box, right? But eventually, it can go down to one of the two green boxes. And so I think where we're having a lot of issue, I think as a community and as a commission, considering this, is that, you know, if we go down and open it up to mixed residential and commercial, we're changing, we're, like, we're opening the box, we're opening Pandora's box, and then to close that back up is gonna be extremely difficult. And so we have to, I, I think, I feel at least that we have to consider, you know, the possibility of a, of a potential project in any one of those other zones, and then consider, then look at the, the criteria that we're just walking through. So if you go back to that number one that we were just considering, where it says that it does not impact safety and, and health and. and and health and and I think the environment was the other one. I I don't think we can make a determination either way. And if we want to infer that a potential project could go in there other than residential, then it is going to impact um the public health and safety and protection of that area. So I think that that's, I I just want to make that clarification and then maybe get some feedback from you. If that's something you considered in that in that way when you're making that statement. I don't know. I'm just trying to follow a logic where we can evaluate these statements and then be able to to make a good recommendation, right?
Also, keep in in staff's defense, keep in mind, they have to base their recommendation based on what is in the code today. And you're right, but it's also hard for them, right? They have to go with the criteria today and they have no data that says. Now, I think we're all smart enough to know that the applicant has no intention of doing any of the R zones and wants to do one of the other ones. So I think we are all smart enough to know that, as is the citizenry. So I think it's a valid point, but staff's recommendations have to go with what's in the criteria. And so I I I feel for them because it's hard to make some of these judgments, so. But I, your points are all taken. Commissioner Laraman?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Torres because we had talked several times about um the definition of safety. And what people's um personal definition is that versus collective group. Second, you had a slide up there about the future um roads um situation. And then I think you might have clicked real quick through, was there one that showed the future that would show how many additional lanes would be added into that area?
No, those were the existing lanes. I was just indicating that um in order to get from a collector's street to an arterial status, the road would have to be upgraded.
Yeah, so one hundred, road one hundred going from a minor to a major or principal, you're gonna have to add lanes to get it there. Yeah, the same with Argent.
That is correct.
Okay, so that was what I was asking for, thank you.
Great comments, others, questions, feedback for staff on this item? Okay, well, if there's none, I think, did you get through all your presentation? Let's go to number, let's go to the number two.
We're still on one. And again, we have uh the possibilities based on the comprehensive plan land use density table. The current um comprehensive plan land use allows for three to six dwelling units per acre. And those zones listed and the proposed is between five and twenty nine dwelling units per acre, depending on the zone that is ultimately allowed. Any questions before I move on? Okay, and then item number two, our criterion number two is, is the proposed amendment, excuse me. Is the proposed amendment consistent with the requirements of the Washington State Growth Management Act? And to the affected portions of the adopted Pasco comprehensive plan? And this is a very long one. It's got A through L, A through L, some of which do not apply. Urban growth. We do want to keep growth within the urban growth boundaries. And so this is obviously um a point in favor of the proposal. Also, there are amenities nearby that have been developed that are in support of the proposal. And those are just more amenities. Any comments before we leave number A?
Number two A, anyone?
Two A. Okay.
Okay.
Two B is reduced sprawl. Again, we're wanting to keep growth and density within the urban growth boundary rather than out in the farm fields. And this is um an opportunity to put residential density within the urban growth areas. Transportation, again, we talked about the kinds of streets that service this area. We've got road one hundred and West Argent Road, which are designated for future development as arterials, a major and a minor arterial to that street or to that property, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, um can we kind of maybe touch on that, maybe a little bit back one, I think, on uh points? It was either B or A about the um the urban growth, yes. I think in our packet, we have a little bit more verbiage about how any subsequent project would be required to construct facilities, including sidewalks and conformance with the Pasco municipal code. And so as we're talking about this, do we take into consideration kind of what's existing now? Like that other map where you have the circles of like the quarter radius and then the half mile radius? It seems like if you just, would they just be required to build those sidewalks on that, on the existing property and then not connect them to anything?
So we do not re, we typically do not require developers to develop sidewalks beyond their property line.
Okay.
There are some exceptions, for example, schools, when they want to do a sidewalk to school projects, then they have them extend to the existing sidewalk. But typically, no.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
That would be is that if there's a segment of road missing from their property to the next paved road, then they would have to connect there.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Yes, Commissioner Crutchfield, I have a question on on it's item B or a clarification about urban sprawl. We hear that a lot. And I just, I I wonder how they, that it's being considered in in this particular situation. We're talking about a two point eight acre parcel within a low density area that's been there for decades. I don't see how that fits in with urban sprawl. I would think that a policy of avoiding sprawl should be, you know, applied more to large undeveloped land areas where it's gonna really make a difference and not in an instance of a relatively small parcel that's in an otherwise fully developed neighborhood of suburban density. So I I just, I get stuck on that one. Thank you.
Point taken.
Okay, let's move on to C. Oh, sorry, did you ever?
Yeah, Commissioner Laraman, what is the consequences when um when we, when the city works against the Urban Growth Management Act? No, seriously, I have some ideas, but can you share them?
Well, when the city, the city is required to update their comprehensive plan, including the land use designations periodically. I think it's every seven year cycle or so. And those plans have to um follow the guidelines of the state. And so there's not much, there's not much wiggle room in terms of those regulations. It's more of where are we gonna put stuff? But we do need to manage um growth so that lands in the right places and make sure that the levels of service for facilities are taken care of. We don't want to go below our designated levels of service. And so those are some of the things that we have to abide by in order to, for example, retain um opportunities for grant funding. That's usually the carrot. And then um we open ourselves up to lawsuits if we, you know, the stick, if we um just go rebel against the state, so.
Thank you.
All right, can we move on to C or is there any more things on B here? And again, I don't expect staff to read these, these were in the packet. So I guess I would ask if there's any, if there's a staff summary, that's fine. Otherwise, if there's any comments or questions for staff on the items. Anything on C here?
I'm sorry, again, to clarify um the road designations we talked about before. So this is a, that would be a correction to this um slide right here.
Excellent. Anything on C? Okay, let's move on to D.
And again, the opportunity to increase the density, that's one of the goals of the comprehensive plan. And it's the city's job to decide where that needs to go and which would be the best places based on infrastructure and the other available amenities in the city.
Great, any feedback or questions on D from the commissioners? Okay, let's move on to E. I think we got the, have we got the L to go or something?
Yes, yeah, what place to go? To be brief, this would be an opportunity to put a commercial development on the corner of what will be or should be in the future to arterials. And one of the goals is to put commercial nodes at the intersections of arterial streets rather than in neighborhoods, than both neighborhoods.
Great, any questions on E? Okay, let's move on to F.
There's quite a few Es.
Oh, we jumped.
We skipped right to K because the other ones didn't really apply.
That's all right, yeah, that's right.
Is, and this is what we're doing tonight, we're having citizen participation and coordination.
Excellent, any questions on this one?
And I also probably want to point out that we have received comments from the public, most of which were in your staff reports, but we also received some between the posting of the staff report and this evening's meeting. And so we've given you copies of those. And so members of the audience who have submitted comments need to know that those comments are before the planning commission. Just want to make sure that everybody knows that they're they are being heard.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Can we just clarify, I think, for everybody and for the public that's here today about what that bullet point actually means? And kind of what are we trying to get at with that point? I, to me, it means that we, as we make this decision, we're taking into consideration, you know, the public opinion and people's uh people's voice on it. Is there anything else that we, to clarify that point?
Yes, I would say that we're taking people's comments into consideration insofar as they apply to the criteria and the findings of fact. And so if you like puppies, that's great, but it doesn't apply to what we're talking about today, so.
Thank you.
Excellent, any question, other questions about K, we'll move on to next one.
Even though this is a non-project proposal, we need to point out that there are paved streets, there's um water and sewer available, power, utilities. And they are sized appropriately for um increased uses, the utilities.
Excellent.
And then we're moving to number three. And that is, does the proposed amendment correct a mapping error? That's a no. Number four, does the proposed amendment address a deficiency in the comprehensive plan? Not really.
Excellent, any questions about number four?
And we're just going through a bunch of land use policy goals and, or goals and policies, I should say. Number five, what are the effects on the physical environment, including open space and natural features? Again, this is a, not only is this a non-project proposal, but um I don't know, I don't believe that there are any significant natural features on the property above and beyond um landscaping. Six, what is the compatibility and impact on adjacent land uses and surrounding neighbors? And I think this is one where the public had a lot to say. And again, we we point out what is allowed by the current land use designation in terms of possible zoning districts. And also the possible zones with the proposed land use designation. And those are low density, R one, median, medium density, R two and R three, and high density, R four. C one, which is uh um commercial, it's a retail business is what it's called. And then O for office, your dentist's office, your lawyers, your accountants. And MU, which is a mixed use zoning, where you have commercial and residential on the same property in the same area. And so those are the possibilities.
Any questions on six for the commissioners? Okay, let's move on to seven.
What are the impacts on public facilities, utilities, transportation system, parks, recreation, and public schools? Most of these, we don't believe they'll have a heavy impact. Depending on the, you know, the project level stuff, which we're not dealing with tonight.
Questions on seven for the commissioners? Okay, eight?
What is the effect on other components of the adoptive, adopted comprehensive plan? And this is kind of a statement, a general statement from staff, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact utility or public service assumptions and forecasts in the twenty eighteen to twenty thirty eight comprehensive plan.
Okay. I think that's all of them, right? Eight?
That's all eight of them, yep.
All right. So yes, we're before, you know, we'll go to the public hearing, but yeah, your recommendation is that tonight, we can hear our discussion, the public comments, and then we can make a decision whether to approve or deny this request. And again, this is just a recommendation to city council, the city council would then, it would go before city council. When would this go before city council?
We're thinking of June for the next planning commission hearing. And then maybe summer or fall of twenty twenty four for the city council.
So you're saying that you're going to have another public hearing on this item in June, then? Okay.
That is the plan.
So I guess you don't want a motion for us, from us tonight?
Not necessarily. I would like to point out, though, that the planning commission can recommend approval as submitted. It could recommend an amended approval, meaning if you think that some other land use designation would be more appropriate, you can recommend one of those other designations, or you can recommend a denial based on the criteria that we've looked at.
So we can, if we do any of those things, we could forego a public hearing in June and either move it on or close it out?
Sure.
Okay, good to know. Before we open it up for public hearing, public comments, any other commissioners?
Yeah, I just, I know you just said it, but I want to make it clear to everybody, we do not approve or deny things. We make recommendation to the city council. I know you just said that, but it needs to be made very clear. If you read some of these letters, first of all, thank you, everybody who wrote a letter, they're very informative, I went through every one of them. But for example, Dallas Green wielding a rezone approval pen, we don't have that, unfortunately. We just make recommendations to city council. Roger Wright, planning commission, deny this application. We don't deny the application. We make the recommendation to city council. So I just wanted to make that clear and thank you all for the letters again. But you, you really opened our eyes a lot. I kept score and I got zero yays except the petitioner, I'm assuming wants to have this done, and about eight nays as far as public comments. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Commissioner Lerman, another thing to add into is that up in front of you is volunteers. So we are not paid. This is a public service that we do back to the community of listening to our fellow residents, neighbors, and having the opportunity to hear from you guys in order to be able to help us, be able to make decisions as well as trying to make sure that we follow the law as well as listen to city staff and do our very best to be able to serve all of Pasco.
Thank you, well said. Anything else from the commissioners? Okay, well, before I open up for public hearing, I won't repeat any of the great comments already. I do want to indicate that we have had many of you speak before, and so we heard you loud and clear last time. We've also, as Commissioner Moffett said, we do, we've read through all of your emails, all of the feedback we got that staff has provided to us, and it's very eye-opening and very helpful. As you come up to speak tonight, there's a couple of things I'd ask. A, if you've already, don't, don't just repeat what you've already said. If you have new information for us to consider, that's great. If you have feedback based on what's been discussed. And I'm also going to ask you to limit your comments. City council does three minutes. We're going to try to target three minutes for, for our comments, too. We have a lot of folks that I know want to speak, so try to target three minutes. Be clear and concise, but also know that we have gone through, we've heard, we've, we've heard a lot of your comments last time, and we've also gone through your emails. And as Commissioner Moffett said, I don't think there, I don't think we're mistaken about the residents' opinion on this matter. So I would encourage you to come up and speak if you have something to add, but I also want to let you know that we've heard. But that doesn't, I still want to encourage you to speak if you feel the need. So with that, I'll open up the public hearing. Please come up and speak if you have a, something you want to tell us on this item, and we'll kind of see, see who, what we can learn more. Anyone? Come on up.
I'll start off.
All right.
I'm Pete Reiki. I live at 9104 West Pooter Street. And you have my written comments, and I've been up here before. I would like to compare the truck proposal, truck habitation proposal, with this proposal here. You were concerned a great deal about the noise and light pollution and the impact on the residential neighborhood. Quite frankly, you know, while this isn't a truck habitation, the impact on the local neighborhood as far as noise, light pollution, increased traffic, so forth and so on, this would be a truck habitation on steroids. So, you know, the impact on us is going to be enormous. We worry on a daily basis how we're going to get to a doctor's appointment in Canaan. How many exits are there? It's, we're now blocked in.
And fortunately, I have a loud voice, so I don't really need a microphone, but, but yes, hopefully they can hear me. But we do, you know, we do worry about whether or not this intersection will become another obstacle to getting out of our neighborhoods. And so the impact on us is substantial. It's also, having lived there for 35 years, you know, it's not what I went there for. It's not why I bought property there for. I know growth occurs, I know it's going to happen, but I think this is a big mistake. This substantially impacts our ability to get around this neighborhood. I spent a lot of time crossing Court Street at Rargent Road, and I know it is now one of the most dangerous places for me to actually cross as it currently exists. It will simply get more dangerous with this proposal. The proponents stated in their application that they want to go to C1 for this. So we can all assume that this is going to be essentially some sort of, of strip mall or gas station or something else. I don't think residential, higher density residential is in the mix here. That's not what their objective is, so I'll leave it at that. And I want to thank you very much, serving on state commissions myself. I understand the, the, the conundrum that you go, you guys go through. So I, I do appreciate your, your commitment to the city of Pasco, and I hope you appreciate our commitment to the city of Pasco. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and expressing your opinion. Appreciate it. Go ahead and just leave that there, yeah. Well, maybe it'll roll out, maybe it won't stay there.
Don't even breathe.
Okay, there you go. All right, I'd love to hear, we'd love to hear for more. If you want to speak on this item, that was a great example of good summary comments and adding new information and perspective. So please come up and share your perspective. Go ahead and actually hit it, it was on already.
Jeff Smith, it's 9808 West Argent and 32 Road 97. The zoning is actually fine the way it is. That's why most people bought out in that area. Some have been out there for decades, some have been out there for a short period of time. They liked a little bit of room around them, half acres, acres, there, there's different sizes. If any of us wanted to live next to a strip mall or gas station, we could have always went somewhere and bought there, but we didn't. We've invested money, some have built beautiful homes out there. And we, and we did it with the assurance that this couldn't happen. When the city annexed the Donut Holes, that was part of it, what the city's idea was. We're not going to change things out here for you, but here we are. We're discussing this. People made a big investment there, and I think to, to change it, it's well established the way it is. Other people on the, on your committee here have made excellent points, that the city has set aside plenty of room for these projects. It doesn't have to be right there. So I would encourage it to be turned down. You have to think about your own home when you go home this evening. What if you just discovered a couple of houses were bought? All of a sudden, they're going to tear it down and they're going to go C1 and put a gas station there. You're probably not going to be too excited about it. So that's, that's where we're at, too. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right, anyone else? Come on up.
You want to go?
Nope.
We'll have you next.
All right, can you hear me? James Larson, 9817 Star Lane. My property will butt up right next to this project. And when I first moved, well, when I was a kid, I lived in West Pasco over by where the post office is, and I dreamed of going out to West Pasco, because what it was. And I bought that place there, and when I first moved there, I had some pretty dark skies. Church moved in, I got more light pollution. So I expect that this commercial thing, I'm going to be hit with a bunch of light, light pollution. I can hear the neighbors on the corner when they have their music on, and that's pretty far away. They have it pretty loud. But I would go through that a lot of your things on your list there are being violated with your own comprehensive plan. And I, page 12, conflict, write this down, LU1, policy to encourage conservation, design with cluster commercial development and discouraging strip commercial development. Transportation, applicant says that there's a transit there, there is no transit there. That's been moved. Conflict of goal on LU3, maintain established neighborhoods, ensuring new neighborhoods are safe and enjoyable places to live. Next conflict, LU5, goal, maintain broad range of residential land use designations to accommodate a variety of lifestyle and housing opportunities. City of Pasco is developing a bunch of small lots on all the new developments, it's small lots. The two lots in question have big lots where a guy could be a small farmer if he wants. Okay? One of the lots has a mobile home, so that's even a, a poorer person could move in there. And we're going to destroy that. Conflict, LU6B. Promote efficient and functioning neighborhood level and major commercial centers to meet community demand. That's a conflict. Your plan is to congregate commercial centers. If you look at your plan map. Up north here, that's what you're doing. They're all being compressed. Housing, conflict, encourage preservation of existing housing stock. You already got houses there. That's in your growth management mandate. Then your next conflict, H2, goal preserving, maintaining existing housing stock for presenting future residents. Conflict, H4, goal, supporting efforts to provide affordable housing to meet the needs of community. Like I said, mobile home, that's a low budget house compared to all the other houses in the neighborhood. God, I have to forget the time. That makes it so somebody who is poor can have a place, do a farm. Covered that. And then says, look at map, policy, maintain general end use. Basically, what I'm saying is, you look at the map, the map don't lie. My dad was on city council, he came up with this plan, he voted for this plan, and your commercial areas are big chunks. And according to the plan, they wanted to get away from little strip mall stuff because they don't do too well because everybody's going to the big box stores. And this, to put in this neighborhood is going to ruin the whole ambiance, and it will have a direct impact on me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I believe, sir, I believe if I'm not mistaken, you, you detailed all this in an email, too.
No, I did not.
Okay, maybe it was a different email, somebody did the same thing, so thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next.
Sandra Cook, 2916 Lend of Mine Court in Pasco. And I would like them just to keep all the commercial things up in the commercial area further up the highway. You go north, you have all those apartments up there. Why don't they accommodate them with more of the little condos or strip malls to accommodate that group of people? All of us, we're mobile, we can get around, we don't need more traffic down where we're at. And all of us down there, for the most part, have lived there quite some time and have invested lots of money in gorgeous homes, and we'd like to keep it that way and not bring some lower quality into the neighborhoods where we might, might have more crime. You know, that's just a thing to look at. And I looked at each one of those recommendations, and it was just a flag up to me and not workable for our community. They need to keep the commercial elsewhere with the big groups that accommodate people that maybe don't have vehicles and have to walk if they don't have more than one vehicle, you know, to access facilities. And that's my point of, I feel is the main thing here.
Great, thank you for your feedback. All right, thank you. Next, next. Now go ahead and turn the light on, it was on. There you go.
My name is Teresa Khrushki, and I live at 10213 Willow Way, just a block over from Argent and right around the corner from where the corner of where it's, the proposal is. And if you aren't around there during busy times, I'll tell you that intersection or where I come off Willow Way is very busy. It can take quite a long time during school hours, after school hours already to get on to Road 100. There's a lot of kids, there's a lot of school buses because there's three schools just about a mile down the way. So on that intersection, you have a lot of families, you have a lot of children, kids because of the school, sports activities. And I know you heard my story before. I was riding out on Broadmoor just north and was hit by a distracted driver. And I was riding out where I thought it was very safe, and this is good because there's not a lot of drivers. All it takes is one, and we all know that distracted driving has surpassed drunk driving as far as accidents. Because of the proximity, I, and because of my awareness now, that changed my life, my family's life forever. But because of my awareness now, I watch people, and I would say probably half the cars I see, people are distracted. So I, it, again, there was red flags for me when it talked about the safety of the impact of health and safety, and I think it will have great impact. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
And thank you for all that you do for volunteer.
Appreciate that. All right, anyone else? Come on up.
Yes, my name is Michael Clayton, and I live at 10036 West Argent, on the corner of 101 in Argent. And I'm concerned about the idea of commercial property and what it will do to that intersection. It's what they call a, what, a view or a vista turn? So you have a, it's not a, not a cross section. You got Argent Road coming in, and it divvies off at about a 33 degree angle to the right as you cross. And so in order to make a left-hand turn at that intersection, you've got to get deep in, and you start blocking traffic on Argent from being able to make turns either way. And it's very difficult. So even the C, the commercial property with people coming in and out with multiple entrances on and off the road, or even a high-density residential, as far as I'm concerned, would, would be a very difficult situation. And, and you do have kids walking to school. We got the Chawana and McGlotten and the elementary school down there, and I got grandkids going to two of them, so. Yeah, it's just, I don't think it's a good spot to start making big changes in the density, the population right there around that intersection.
Thank you. All right, others? Coming up.
Judy Simpson, 11404 West Court Street. I have not submitted one to online, so I just thought I'd read what I feel like. So it's, I would like to go on the record to ask the, the planning commission to not recommend the zoning request change to low-density residential to mixed residential-commercial for the lots on the corner of Road 100 in Argent. This is a residential area, and the commercial zone should remain closer to the freeway. That's an existing area for that type of thing, and it's, it makes sense. I would like the commission to consider the zoning changes that have been done at Harris Farm and how it's, how it's affected our areas there. It's changed our whole neighborhood. And I just, it's kind of decimated it. And I'd like you to be aware that this doesn't make sense right here. It's, it's totally an existing community that's there, it's been there for decades. And it's important that you keep the existing community in mind when you're making these decisions. And I just, the request is not compatible with what's there currently, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Come on up.
My name's Dallas Green, and I want to apologize for my wielding pen comment. What I saw tonight, actually thinking you guys were always the big boogeymen and ladies, was a group of people who really care about the community, and I say that sincerely. Started with. Started with Commissioner Moffett's comments and on down the line. And as someone else said, we spent a lot of time talking about truck stops and hookers tonight, but yet this is a neighborhood. This is a neighborhood that's going to be radically impacted by whatever goes there. And I think the zoning path which was well played out, it's a gateway drug. Once it changes, it's going to be really hard to stop that train and it's going to impact the neighborhood. Some great comments, just to reiterate, use not compatible with residential neighborhood, hours of operation. It's likely going to be a strip mall to some extent. Existing residential, they have a greater buffer, that's what we heard about as a possible thing for the truck stop. Disturbance to the public. I spoke to someone from the city the other day about this property, paid employee. And they raised a question about, you know, traffic. Because I said, what's going to happen with that traffic circle? Is it going to happen? It's going to have to happen. And you start looking at it, I'm in real estate. Any commercial project, any residential project, you have to have proper ingress and egress. And you have setbacks and distances from a corner. How are you going to pull that off there? I don't see it happening on a long, narrow lot like that. It, it's, it's rife with trouble. A twenty-nine unit per acre development, you could have seventy-five, eighty residences in a, some sort of a low-rise building there. I just, I just think it's ill-conceived for that location. I would recommend a no recommendation, if you would please, tonight. And we do, we cut the head off the chicken and we move on to more important business like truck stops. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Make a second call, I might make three calls, so. All right, we got someone? Come on up.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Ivan Pernetto. I live at two nine one seven, road one hundred. My property is directly south of the impacted property. I would, as you consider this recommendation, I would encourage you guys to, the same thought that you were putting into this truck stop, the, the safety portion of it mostly, the impact to the surrounding neighborhoods. Please consider that as you make this recommendation for what is being proposed to you guys this evening. As some of the comments have already been made, some of us moved into that neighborhood because of how it was. Allowing this to happen, allowing this change is going to significantly impact that, that neighborhood. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'll make one last call before we close the public hearing, please, as an opportunity. Go ahead. And I believe you're the applicant, correct? Or you represent the applicant?
That's correct. Shane O'Neil, Clover Planning, Pascal Washington. I have fifteen years of city planning experience. I believe Mr. Adams has that or more. Jacob Gonzalez presented this item at the workshop. So my application materials, which continue to be omitted from your packets for some reason, combined with the staff report, they, they recommend approval. They provide substantial reasoning based on the Growth Management Act and the city's comprehensive plan, supporting approval. So you have approximately sixty years of planning experience encouraging you to approve or recommend approval of this application. If, you know, it kind of sounds like the commission is pretty dead set on ignoring that advice from the professionals here and the economic development department, based on public sentiment alone. I recognize that the workshop, the commissioners pointed to criteria C, which is vaguely discusses impacts or potential impacts. This is a non-project action. There are no impacts that can be identified or quantified. If you're going to use that criteria as the basis for a negative recommendation, please develop a finding that would support your negative recommendation. The reason I ask for that is because I don't think that you can. I see that the commission is heavily swayed by the large group of residents behind me and their negative comments. I think you all are aware that the negative emotion is the stronger one. That's why you get a wealth of negative comments and testimony during hearings. You are rarely going to get a number of comments from people who are indifferent or in support of an application unless they're somehow persuaded. You know, I have a lot of stuff prepared here, but I just want to say that I've, I've heard the commission and the residents pretty vehemently assume that we don't intend to do residential development or that, excuse me, the owner doesn't intend to apply for a rezon that's residential in nature. That's incorrect. There is no development plan here. The property owners has contracted me to make this application to enhance the economic potential of the property in any way. If you approve, or if this comp plan amendment is approved, it opens the door for us to rezone to R two, which is, you know, a duplex zoning district. That would be great. Same with R three, medium-density, triplexes or something of the sort. And R four, that'd be probably a tough, tough sell to the neighbors. But the process in place here has a safeguard and that is the next step, the rezone process. If, if the planning commission doesn't feel like commercial development is appropriate there, you have the rezone process to protect against that. So if I come back and I apply for a C one zone, you can outright deny it. It seems like you've got substantial basis for doing so. So, you know, I'm present with this process. I see what's going on and I am sensitive to that. So I would not bring forward a bold request like to a C one zone because it's been clear that that's not going to make people happy. You know, the, the property owners, they are local residents, they don't live on site anymore. But what you have there is a small, a two small residential dwelling units on about three acres. It's mostly field. Does it serve the economic development goals of the city to just keep these empty fields in place? I mean, it, it's a maintenance, it's a fire hazard, it's a maintenance burden on the property owners. It's kind of unsightly, it's, it's country-like, it's okay. But the Growth Management Act is in opposition to that type of thing remaining in urban growth areas. It strongly encourages and pretty much requires infill. This is a good infill location and it's, it's got a lot of vacant land, it's somewhat in the city's core and it has the opportunity to provide useful services or affordable dwelling units to the surrounding neighborhoods. I hear a lot of concern about the existing condition of the, the traffic. The intersection apparently is not good enough and it's dangerous. More vehicle traffic is inevitable over time, but there seems to be a misunderstanding on how traffic improvements are made. Without a project, that intersection will remain in its current condition. If, if a development project comes through, it will be assessed a traffic impact fee and/or required to improve that intersection. It also comes with the requirement to develop sidewalks to make connectivity for the pedestrians in the area. If you're walking from one of those homes on road one hundred to the church, now you'll have an additional segment of sidewalk for your safe walkability. And Jeff pointed out that the transportation master plan identifies road one hundred as a future arterial for widening. This project, this site, if left undeveloped, will preclude that road widening because of its property line extension into what would be the expanded right of way. So if a project comes through, the city will clearly condition dedication of that strip of land to make road one hundred wider, to accommodate more vehicles safely, appropriately. If there is the thought that they can rezone under the current low-density land use designation, excuse me, low-density residential, as someone else mentioned, this parcel in its triangular shape and its location doesn't lend itself to a subdivision. To get the dwelling unit count that is allowed by, you know, the rules, you would inevitably have to do some type of right-of-way dedication or connect through another property. It's, it's not a feasible design. You can't add a cul-de-sac there. But what you can do is add a single consolidated driveway serving multiple dwelling units or an office use. We won't even talk about commercial anymore.
Mr. O'Neil, can you start to wrap your comments, please?
I do request my due process rights and ability to testify.
But this is a public hearing and I've given everyone the same amount of time to speak, so I'd ask you to start wrapping up, please.
Well, thank you. I point out that the staff report repeatedly uses an incorrect file number. This is the year twenty twenty-four, not twenty twenty-three. I don't dislike Ms. Lerman, but I do object to her continued participation due to her prior recusal. I'd like to make that note. And I, I still would like you to review the application materials that I provided that you're repeatedly omitted from your packets for some reason.
Yeah, I, I think we originally, when this came up, we did have the full application and we did review all the application materials. So it's not that we haven't seen them. But I appreciate your comments, it's a, it's the other perspective and, and it's a valid perspective. You are correct, this is a, an amendment, it's not a zoning discussion and a zoning approvals. That's a fair, and I, I think it's important we all consider that. So I think with that, I will make one last call for public comments in the public hearing. And go ahead. And then we'll, again, keep, try, try to keep wrapped up to three minutes.
I also have a house at thirty-two oh seven, road one oh one, right near this project. If I heard the proponent accurately, city council, city planning has already approved, say it's a good thing. What he just said was, city planning says we're, we like it.
That's not, that's incorrect.
Oh, okay, so he's wrong then, anyway, so.
All that the city staff has done is they've graded it by the criteria that they've graded it by and they've assessed by the criteria. They have not made an approval or a denial recommendation.
There is no approval yet. Okay, and what you guys do here is if I understand this right, you make a recommendation to city council about this project. So if whatever you've heard eight to one, one, four, eight against or more. So how, how effective is your recommendation to city council, say, yeah, we're not going to do this one? Does that happen?
I can't answer that. I mean, city council often goes with our recommendations, sometimes they kick stuff back. Again, we are a volunteer-appointed body and we're not elected officials, so you wouldn't want us making the decision. You would want represented elected officials making that decision. So we are just to help them in that process, so.
They listen to.
And, and honestly, you can come back when this is before, if this was before the city council, you could come back and voice your opinion. I strongly encourage you to do that regardless of what we recommend.
I wouldn't be here if one of my neighbors hadn't seen this happening tonight. So how are we supposed to hear this? How are we supposed to know about this?
Well, we appreciate you sharing your feedback.
Okay, so I want to make, how do I get on that list to make sure we know about future?
We have a website that has all of our agendas that you can look at. And you can also have them email you alerts.
Yeah, there's an email list and there's a website.
Email me, call me, and I can help you find that.
Thank you. Anyone else, last call? Go ahead, well, you spoke once.
I would like to make a final comment.
Okay.
I received, I've signed up for the email notifications. I received that on Tuesday. Okay, that was not time enough for me to actually get notification out to other people about this meeting. So I think your attendance is actually smaller than it should be. Unfortunately, my outlook went tits up and I had difficulty there. But nonetheless, I think a little bit longer leave time in your announcements of these public hearings would be appreciated.
Okay, I think we follow pretty strict guidelines on that, so maybe there's something wrong with the email or something like that.
So the.
What's that?
The notice was sent out on April second. April second, two thousand twenty-four is when the notice was sent from our office.
Okay.
In fact, the affidavit is part of the report, too.
I certainly didn't see that.
Yeah, that's unfortunate. We try to, they, they try to do that because they have strict requirements around that. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Nate Clayton. I've already met my father. I live on the back lot behind him on one zero zero three three Locust Lane. My plan is to build on that land that's behind my father's property. As he gets older, my mother gets older, I'd be there to take care of him. After hearing this stuff tonight, if this thing goes forward, I'm not building anything there. I'll just sell my land and move away from Pasco because my, my goal was to come back after I retired in December from the army to come back home to Pasco and this is where we were going to have our kids and, and, you know, they'll have stability. Like my boy's going to Chihuahua, the other one goes over to McLaughlin. And, you know, I'm expecting, you know, good things for them. But this right here, I don't want this stuff over by my neighborhood, ever. And I recommend that you guys, your recommendation goes forward as no.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Let's go. Okay, we will close the public hearing on this item. So commissioners, I think we, second, I think we have four kind of courses of action we can take tonight. The first course of action is we could recommend continuance to a June public hearing and further discuss this. The second course of action is we could deny this application. The third course of action is we could approve and recommend to city council for this action. Or we could also recommend alternate zoning or land use designations as per the recommendation. So there's four options. Recommend, approve, recommend, deny, an alternate land use designation, or let's continue the conversation in June. Does that make sense? So with that, I'll open it up if you have further questions for staff or comments.
Just some comments at this time, Commissioner Crutchfield. I appreciate everyone coming forward and sharing their views, their emotional views and their attachment to Pasco that's undergoing a lot of changes. Some of us who've been here a long time are seeing that. But I think kind of boiling it down to simple facts here. The one that strikes me the most, again, I read, and that was the city's entry into their information. I've already stated it earlier, but it's where there is no degree of accuracy or percentage of knowing what the developer intends to do. And basically, I believe the MU site for this is not appropriate. It amounts to a blank check for the applicant and it's going to be after the fact. And then the neighborhood is left with the result. There is commercial land north, plenty of space there if a person wants to develop. And this current site can be developed. Low-density residential would allow six dwelling units per acre, so there could be up to sixteen housing units. Instead of changing it, so there's up to thirty or twenty-nine per acre. That definitely changes the flavor of that community in a negative way, in my opinion. And then I had a question about something in the staff's report also. It said, any commercial development has the potential of encouraging economic growth. And I guess that's true, but I think taking care of where you do that. I mean, I'm not going to be too thrilled if I get seven eleven next to me, even if I can walk to it to get a slurpee or whatever. walk to it, to get a Slurpee or whatever, if I've lived in my environment for, you know, a long time. I think an owner should be able to develop their property and use it. I, I do. And then the last thing I wanted to say is, you know, per the Pasco municipal code, it says the city must consider prior to approval, several different things. One is current and projected daily density and the compatibility and impact on adjacent land in the surrounding neighborhoods. I think traffic's a big issue, safety's a big issue. We have the Heritage Trail going along court. We have a lot of biking and, um, when they have events, there's multiple biking. We have a big development going in down by Harris Farm that's going to create a lot of traffic along that corridor. And I, I don't think we should just add more to it. Thank you.
Other commissioner comments or feedback? Go ahead.
Commissioner Moffett here. So, um, I've only been in Tri-Cities about 10 years and a lot of these places I haven't been. So when they come across our desk and come to our house, I tend to go there and, and check it out. And I've been to this location about three or four times and, um, the last time really surprised me because you guys always complained about traffic, but I drive by there and there's no traffic. So you know what I did? I did it during rush hour and school hour. Oh my God, there's a lot of traffic. You know? So I get it, what you're saying with traffic, but you get, you know, you got to hit it the right times. And so, uh, I, I got a big eye-opening the last couple of weeks because of that. But I, I do appreciate what you had to say and I, and I, I actually was, um, prepared to make a motion for denial. And then after your testimony, I think that, um, it, it deserves a little more looking into. Honestly, I'm leaning towards denial, not going to, not going to cover that up for you. But, uh, I, I, you've made some valid points as well. And so I'm, if, if nobody makes a motion, then I'll look into that. If somebody makes a motion, then we'll see how that falls out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
So as I understand it, under the current zoning, um, they can build how many units?
Six rooms per acre.
Six units.
16 housing units.
16 housing units?
Is that correct, Jeff?
Three to six.
They could do that with, under the current zoning and just going through the, the, the prescribed development steps?
That's the land use designation, three to six per acre, but the current zoning, um, less.
Okay.
Three, two, six, not 36.
Well, I'm just saying, that's, that's a substantial project in and of itself, uh, and they could do that without, without any, um, without having to go through rezoning and all that sort of stuff and, and-
It would have to be rezoned. It would have to be rezoned to get a higher density. Right now it's RS20, which is one house or 20,000 square feet.
Okay.
But they'd have to go through a rezon for this project as well, so, you know, either way, they're going to have to do a rezon. All right, commissioners, um, I think what, you know, there's those, again, those four options, I think we can move on any of those four options. I would entertain a motion or more discussion.
Just to clarify, we're, are we doing a recommendation or are we doing a motion? A motion to recommend? Okay.
One is a motion to continue, a motion to deny, a motion to approve, and a motion to, would be to, uh, recommend a different designation, which could be different. Now, I don't know that I'm qualified to make a different designation recommendation, but that isn't my-
Sorry. Uh, there's four options. One is we can make a recommendation to approve, make a recommendation to deny, a recommendation to continue to June, or a recommendation for an alternate designation. And I was saying, I'm not sure I'm qualified to make that alternate designation, but that is an option if somebody has a better designation that they would prefer for this, this land use. Anyone?
I'll make a recommendation. I don't think anything's going to change come June. I recommend to deny.
So Commissioner Crutchfield has made a motion to recommend denial of this application. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Torres. I will ask all those in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any denials? The motion passes for a recommendation to city council to deny this application. I also wanted- Steph, and please also advise us, it was raised, there was an objection, uh, to Commissioner Lerman's participation and that we should make sure that's noted in the recommendation that she was not recused. She also provided justification why, um, that was for the last meeting when she was running as a city council candidate. She is no longer in that position, no longer in running for political office, and so it's a different situation, but make it noted for the record because it was raised as objection by the applicant or the representation. Yes, there still would have been a quorum, so either, very good point, very good point. So with that, um, we have no other old business or other items on the agenda. Staff, is there any other business that you would like to discuss for next month or otherwise?
No, sir.
Okay, and I noted that next month Commissioner Lerman will be chairing because I will be, uh, away, so, um, well, thank you for doing that. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn this meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. The meeting is adjourned at 8:47 PM. Thank you all for attending and thank you, commissioners.